...reliable. Melavine, an old friend from many, many years and the mayor's point person on reforming DWP, has endorsed me and Bob Lumenfield and Wes Valley has also endorsed me. All of these are people I've worked with for years. I've worked with VICA for years, Stu, the whole crew. I'd love to have the support of VICA. I would like you to join those saying, working with Wally is a pleasure.
Thank you.[45.12][45.12](applause)
Hi, I'm Tara Lynn Ramsey. Welcome to our job interview.[52.12][52.12](laughter) So what is the first question that a potential employer asks? What is your experience for this job? I've been working in these communities for 15 years, first as a neighborhood leader, well actually first as a reporter, then as a neighborhood leader and Councilmember LaBonde, recognized by the board, offered me a job on his staff in 2006 and I've been working in that office just delivering for the communities of the 4th District, problem solving with folks like you, business leaders, community leaders, and have genuine success on the ground improving the 4th District. That's why Councilmember LaBonde has endorsed me, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, and dozens and dozens and dozens of community leaders in the 4th District. They know that I'm about delivering for these communities, holding City Hall accountable to these communities, and solving the problems that come up every day in a council office and in a city of this size. I have three top priorities as a council member, as your council member. One is to protect and enhance the neighborhoods and business districts of the 4th District. Two, to fix our infrastructure and do it right. If we're going to tear up your street for the first time in a hundred years, let's fix the water pipe underneath as well instead of coming back a year later and tearing up fresh asphalt, throwing good money after bad. And three, I'm the only candidate who has a specific economic development initiative called the Hollywood Innovation Zone. This gives me credit for already having accomplished it. Thank you so much.[157.16][157.16](laughter) What we're doing is, this is a 20-block area between Melrose and Fountain where we're bringing high-tech entrepreneurs to studios and to innovate new businesses at the nexus of high-tech and entertainment. These will anchor the economy going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.[178.45][178.45](applause)
Tara?
Hi, everybody. I'm Tara Bannister. I'm running to be your City Councilmember for District 4 because I believe Los Angeles and our City Council needs to have a bigger, brighter, bolder vision of what's possible in our city and what's possible in our City Council. I believe we absolutely need to have safe neighborhoods, fix our streets, fix our sidewalks, fix our alleyways, fix our roads, but we need to focus on economic development. We need to create good jobs, we need our businesses to be able to open quickly, become profitable quickly, and we need to be able to keep our businesses here right in Los Angeles. None of you here, unless you've heard me speak before, know that I am the daughter of an immigrant. My dad actually saved the silver shavings and scrap metal on the ground for two and a half years to buy his boat ticket to America from Ireland, believing that he could find his American dream. You can imagine with his daughter running for City Council and actually seeing my name on a ballot this morning, that he just thinks this American dream is absolutely attainable for everybody. I came from Massachusetts to USC 25 years ago and I decided about 24 and a half years ago that this is absolutely paradise and I knew I could find my California dream right here. But we cannot find our California dream unless people can get a good job and people can make money and people can find a wonderful place to live and our City Council can provide a good neighborhood for them to live in. In my background, after graduating from college, I worked in government and in politics. I was senior advisor to former governor. And then I went off to help entrepreneurs create businesses. I've created several different businesses. The last one now has 800 employees and sells their products nationwide. I also have founded, helped found two different associations, Business Association, the Biz Fed, I helped hire Tracy Rafter, who I think is doing a phenomenal job, and the California Apartment Association, Los Angeles. Thank you for your time.[301.12][301.12](applause)
Steve?
Good morning. My name is Steve Eris. Thank you. I am the Sherman Oaks resident. Father, our wife and I are raising our three daughters here in the neighborhood. And I've been a rally resident for the last 17 years. And I'm a native Angeline, so I had a chance to live on both sides of the hill, which I think is important for this seat that's drawn so uniquely. You know, I come to you today, this is an interesting conference with VICA, it's been one of these institutions that I've had a chance to be a part of and work with through the years and many of you there sitting at this table, because it means business and because business is important to the city. As I embark on this interesting adventure with my friends here, we're all over the city talking about various issues and they're, I don't have great points, I think many times we are trying to find which side of the square we're going to stand on and the square is actually the same thing. So it's been a challenge. You know, you've heard from some this idea of like I can hit the ground running. You've heard from some that I've got, you know, all these reputable people endorsing you. But I think this race is about who you can trust. It's about our reputation, not the reputation of others. It's about hitting the ground running in the right direction. For me, jobs are important. I've spent the last year working really closely with many of you on the film and TV tax credit that happened inside of my house. It was a tremendous win for this state. It put us in an absolutely competitive place with the rest of the states in this nation. It put us on the map even in the world in terms of this competition. My specific role, I worked on any debt lottery system that took away from what was the best proposal for economics, not just about winning lottery. It was about the best job creator. I have experience in managing the dollar and I'll say this, the LA Community College District was an institution that was troubled and in the past few years, we've done a tremendous amount of moving in the right direction. It's a big bank account. It's lots of money in, lots of money out. Had plenty of challenges, but I hope to be able to take those experiences and apply them here to the City of Los Angeles.
Steve?[432.12][432.12](applause)
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So let's start with my first chapter in life because it is about business. I worked with the health club industry and helped professionalize the fitness industry, which was in dire need of some standards. So I created mandatory certification standards that the fitness trainers and teachers utilize today. I then opened up my own vocational training school and I had people come in from all over the world from my program. I had the school for 12 years and the best part was generating the jobs. So we generated jobs for over 2,000 people. From there, I adopted my daughter, my LGBT daughter, at birth and when she went to Sherman Oaks Elementary, I saw this struggling school, so together with a team of parents, we pretty much put it on the map. We tripled the fundraisers, we tripled parent participation, and we brought the business community into the school, the same thing with the neighborhood, so we could thrive together. Nobody was connecting. We also created our own nonprofit kid center because the Y was coming in and making $75,000 and walking away with it. So we created our 501(c)(3). LAUSD could not sweep our money and the first year, we generated $125,000 that went right to the school. Nine and a half years ago, I was recruited by the council office after they saw me in action and I first worked with Councilmember Jack Weiss these last four years and I've been working with Councilman Paul Coretts, leave of absence as Chief of Staff, and I know how the city works, I know how it doesn't work. I'm a champion of city services and I effectively get things done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[556.12][556.12](applause) All right, let's get right to the questions. Two-minute responses, please. All right, so the first question, look, VICA has built a great reputation and has continued to grow in influence and stature because of being a strong advocate for the San Fernando Valley First, for the business community here in the Valley, generally, and for improved quality of life throughout the Valley. So for each of you, what do you think is the primary issue for Valley businesses and how will you address it? And Wally, we'll start with you and then we'll take it from you.
I focus frankly on the transportation issue. I think everybody in this room does not need me to lecture you on the extent to which the Valley has been short-changed and afterthought upon much of Metro's expenditures. Thank goodness, they did the Orange Line and at least went that far, but we all know that the Orange Line would accommodate about three times the ridership it currently has if it were a light rail system. There's discussion about moving to a second Prop R, an extension of Prop R, and the candidates have taken various positions on that. Mine is pretty darn simple. I'm prepared to support an extension of Prop R when and if, and only if, it's, if the plan encompasses the San Fernando Valley in its funded proposals that are guaranteed to be funded. Orange Line needs to go to light rail. That is an enormous economic benefit for the Valley internally because people can move back and forth. It's entirely doable and within reach, but I will not support Prop R unless that's in there. Secondly, the San Fernando Valley commutes about 500,000 commute trips a day across the hill to West Los Angeles and the central parts of the city. Those are not people going to Valley jobs, but there's are people bringing paychecks back to the Valley. That commute is absolutely invisible. Ron Ziff calls the Sherman Oaks the largest... Am I out of time?
You know, I'm sorry. I thought you said one minute for each response, but it's two for the questions from moderate.
No, it's okay. What should we do?
You have 20 seconds.
I have 20 seconds.[700.24][700.24](laughter)
Keep talking.
My final seven points are these.[704.04][704.04](laughter) I advocate establishing a high-end bus line between the San Fernando Valley and West Los Angeles. The reason is this: Public transit is failing to attract professionals. That is the key failure of public transit. It is becoming transit for other kinds of folks. We need to solve that problem.
Thank you. Carol?
So I'm so glad that Wally mentioned Ron Ziff. He's a leader in Sherman Oaks. He came to our office about a year ago and said, you know, we only have, Metro only has one bus line over the hill from Sherman Oaks to West LA and it stops at UCLA. If they developed another one that came from farther into the Valley to deeper into the west side, we could get a lot more people out of their cars. So we worked with Metro and guess what? That bus line started about a month and a half ago. So that is the type of networking and problem solving that I will bring to this role as a council member. Two, my preference for the East Valley Transit Corridor is, not to get too jargony, is the low-floor tram. And that can get up to 50 miles an hour under the hill if the tunnel gets built, or P3 Tunnel. And the, I think that is the solution that will get people actually out of their cars. I was horrified when the original measure R didn't include any amenities for or improvements to the 101 in the Valley. It's ridiculous. So I will fight for the Valley. It's clear to me how short-changed the Valley has gotten. I've seen it over and over and over again in the parks, on the, just the street resurfacing, the tree trimming. As soon as we absorbed Sherman Oaks in the Council District 4, we just started, you know, we got new soccer fields for the Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Park, we got new fitness equipment, we got the streets repaved because it was clear that Sherman Oaks had not gotten its fair share for years and years and years. Thanks.
Tara?
I started a few businesses and I can tell you the cheapest, that you need to be able to get up running quickly, you need to keep your cash flow to yourself, to the business, that you can pay for staff, so you can buy equipment, so that you can get to your customers really quickly. Our city government makes all those things very difficult right now. Those are the first few things that are not just about San Fernando Valley businesses, but about the rest of the businesses. One of the businesses I worked on very quickly recently, we had Obama tax credits, we had no gross receipts or net receipts or any business tax. It was just about paying for getting our equipment, getting the people working, and that made us profitable within six months. That's what we need to do is focus on how to get businesses up and running and how to stay running. Now, let's talk about getting the customers around, which is really what we're talking about transportation here, because the question is about businesses. We need to focus on when we're talking about customers, people coming internationally, nationally, traveling in and out of Burbank or LAX to get to Universal Studios and then staying there for a few days and spending a lot of money there. So we need to look at the long-term, long travel from LAX or from Burbank. Let's make it as easy as possible. Let's, of course, bus line, orange bus line turns from a bus line to a light rail, but in the meantime, let's add some express bus ways. That will, express buses, that will make it a lot quicker to move around. But then let's also talk about people that are commuting back and forth so that Valley businesses can get their employees here quicker and easier and they're not stressed out when they get here and not stressed out when they go home so that the good employees stay working here in the San Fernando Valley and don't go working somewhere else. And then let's also talk about those of us that live in a neighborhood and then want to shop in a neighborhood. It should be really easy for, I live at Park Caballo right now, but it should be really easy for somebody who's 84 years old to travel around in their neighborhood on a dash bus or something very easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
You know, transportation's important and the NTA is certainly important. We have an arm's distance connection from being a City Councilmember, tax or the decision-making that takes place at the NTA. Clear. We can talk about all the lines and orientation and that kind of thing and, but the reality of it is, is that there's a handful of duties that are specifically under the auspices of City Council. And I will say this, and I'll leave this at the point of transportation. The North Hollywood Station for the Red Line, if you don't get there by 8 o'clock, you're not able to use that system to get into the... I can see for, we're very closely with CD2 to figure out solutions to ensure that people can take the middle. That's a land use decision around the station, we can help with that. Now, at the City Law, I've had an opportunity to bring an experience from the college. I'll bring an experience that deals with overseeing thousands of jobs created. I have an experience with the DWP that's almost frightening. We've had challenges electrifying companies, we've had challenges plugging in solar systems into the grid. It's a very typical agency to work with and that's an agency that falls directly into the purview of the City Council. The DWP can be a better partner for business. Right now, it's not a partner. It's an adversarial relationship that needs significant change. On the other side of things, the city of Los Angeles also is troubled with, in just the basic being competitive for attracting business, being attractive for maintaining business, and that's got to change too. You know, right now, and we're probably going to have a question since we're at VICA, dealing with the minimum wage and dealing with the grocery receipts tax, but those are all part of the competitive disadvantages of Los Angeles. And until we find better solutions, I'll use a very simple example. Toluca Lake is a neighborhood, a riverbank right down Riverside. Part of Toluca Lake lies in Los Angeles, part of Toluca Lake lies in Burbank. There's lots of small businesses that are making everyday decisions on whether they want to be on the east side or the west side, and many of the competitive disadvantages that Los Angeles puts in front of them makes it very easy to go east. That's got to change.
We are just not business friendly. And city government has become an obstacle to our businesses. The streamlining of the permit process is extremely important to move our businesses along. It takes them a year, sometimes 18 months to open up. It's unacceptable, but by the time they open up, they have no money left. I have lived in Sherman Oaks for 28 years, so I've seen huge change in the Valley, traveling through the Valley every day of my life and talking to the businesses in different areas of Sherman Oaks and Cino Studio City, they have the same problems. It's all about how the city treats them. When you first start a business, there is a tax exemption for you, except if you don't make it by the deadline date, which is all in fine print, by the way, you don't get that tax exemption. We need to be able to educate our businesses when they come in. One of the things I do want to do is have some business seminars. We had a very successful one, which helped Darrell Horton. We worked with the Chamber and we were able to bring in people who were interested in opening up businesses as well as our small businesses. 75% of our businesses are small business. And then we have the parking issue. We need to get the Department of Transportation to come into the Sherman Oaks area, the Valley area, and work with their LA Express parking because what's happening is people are going round and round, which of course is not good for the environment either, and they're frustrated so they decide, no, I've done that. I say, oh, forget it, I'm going to the mall. So we need to provide the proper amount of parking. Transportation is always going to be an issue. I live in Sherman Oaks. The office that I work in is six minutes away. It'll take me 45 minutes in the morning to get there. Thank you.
David?
This is 30 seconds, right? When you go like this.
15.
Oh, it's 15.
Yeah.
Sorry. I'm going to make this.
It's very strange, though.
You know, there are many things that we could address and all of the colleagues here talk about transportation, which is a huge important issue, but it's also, I wanted to focus on streamlining and cutting the red tape. Not just talking about saying it, but actually doing it. Let me give you an example. I had a business owner who came to me and said, David, I need some help. There was an alleyway, he owns two buildings between, in a block, and there was an alleyway in between where it was cracked. It was in Hollywood, so it was drug-infested, there was a lot of used condoms, syringe needles, and there was a school on the other side where kids were going back and forth. So he wanted to take over the alleyway. It took him four years to convince the city that he'll take over it, maintain it, clean it. They fought him tooth and nail to do it. When they gave it to him, they said, great job, thank you so much, you're doing the city a great service. It costed him $90,000 to repave the alleyway and $200,000 in permits fees. Okay? And on the very end, because you had to enlarge, do all this stuff that they asked, at the end of four years, when it came to the final, getting the stamp of approval, because it went through so many different people at building and safety, and I'm sure you guys could all relate to this, the final engineer or the final plan check person looked at it and said, by the way, because it's written in the city's favor, of course, I could ask you to do this and I'm going to ask you, and this is in Hollywood, he said, can you repave the entire block? The sidewalks? And he said, oh my gosh, that's ridiculous. Came to my attention, I called a friend at the City Council Office who immediately realized, yeah, that's absolutely ludicrous. And of course, we got that resolved, but you shouldn't have to come to a City Council Office to fix something like that. It should, it's common sense. It's about having a system where we could, where you don't always have to come to us, have like a concierge system where they can make the decisions and streamline businesses. And I'm sure for the transportation issue, there'll be another question for that, so I'll reserve it for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Let's drill down a little deeper. As I think most of you know, Mayor Garcetti has publicly stated that he wants to eliminate the grocery receipts tax, which puts Valley businesses at a distinct competitive disadvantage from some of our neighboring cities, but there's been opposition on the City Council because of the budget impacts. So my question for you is, do you support or not support the elimination of the DRT? And in any case, what would you do as a member of the Council to overcome council opposition to moving that forward? And Carol, we'll start with you.
Okay. I do support accelerating the elimination of the grocery receipts tax. There are a lot of ways that we can do it and we have to find the right model. Maybe we increase the minimum gross to $500,000 to start or there are a lot, we have to find that sweet spot where the, we don't lose so much revenue that the city budget is in, you know, further freefall, but we have to support our businesses. It's so clear that the, you know, the councils and the state are both looking at increasing the minimum wage, so we have to provide relief to our small businesses in particular. Most of the businesses in the 4th District are small businesses. We have Toluca Lake, Larchmont, Sherman Oaks, Hollywood, the Miracle Mile. These are all small business districts with small bids or chambers like the Sherman Oaks Chamber where Vicki Nosman, which she ably runs. So I want to work with you to develop the, find the plan that works so that we don't put too much, we don't collapse the city budget, but also so that we provide genuine relief for small businesses. Also, my Hollywood Innovation Zone is going to be my laboratory for figuring out why it takes so long for the DWP to hook up the water line or get your electrical upgraded and solve those issues. This is going to be my opportunity to do genuine problem solving and work through the system to make it easier to set up and maintain a business in Los Angeles providing good, clean jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect.
Perfect timing, exactly. The last time we changed the grocery receipts tax, I was actually part of the group that did that. So this is one of those issues that I can get down very deep into the weeds and being a business person, I understand how it can help and how it hurts. It is $487 million in the city government is the receipts from the grocery receipts tax. That is within the $8 billion budget. We're now, now you have an idea what those numbers are that we need to talk about. Now, absolutely I'm for eliminating it, absolutely. Do we go to a net receipt so that we allow people to take out how much money they spend on personnel and on staffing as well as on goods and services, purchases and equipments? That would make sense first. That would actually match what other governments across the country do. However, I think we need to get rid of it absolutely completely. There are other ways. The city actually is a business in some ways, and I'm saying in some ways, not in every possible way, but in some ways, and the city can determine how much money it does make. For example, if we start building more apartments and more businesses along the Expo Line, that creates good jobs and also creates increased property values and we, the city makes more money off of property values as well as off of the permitting, which permitting is number two, property is number, property income tax is number one for our income. Also, we need to focus on getting more tourists to California and to Los Angeles in particular. We need more hotel rooms. If we have more, build more hotels, we make more money off of the hotels and we make more money off of the hotels, for the actual individual rooms. There are other ways we can focus to increasing our revenue so that we allow our businesses to incubate here and to grow and to hopefully get back some of those big businesses, not just the small businesses, because we need all business here. And this is something that obviously, having been a business person and working with business community, I understand quite well. Thank you.
Steve?
This is one issue that I've had a couple of colleagues criticize via other forums for being steady and consistent with my position on the grocery receipts tax. This is an absolute competitive disadvantage for the City of Los Angeles. I'll use an example, years back, the state of California had a problem with its tax system. It put it out of whack with the rest of the country. Frankly, we were competing, this state was competing against other states and we weren't there any well. You could see Amgen, not too far from us in Thousand Oaks, because of that tax structure, opened up a massive research facility in order, just people doing dollars and cents, adding it up and relief. Now, California, the voters passed it. We moved to a competitive scenario where we're on the same plane as Texas and New Jersey. It's a positive thing. In Los Angeles, we don't have a good sense of what the cost of doing business is, but our competitors are very clear. They're all next to us. They're in Calabasas, they're in Burbank, they're in Long Beach, they're in Pasadena. All those communities don't have that situation. We have to understand the different features of what it costs to do business and get to a competitive perspective, get to a competitive place. In some cases, I'll use Burbank as an example, their water and power bill's just a little bit higher than Los Angeles, but yet they're by reputation more business friendly. That's interesting. I find that piece of the equation perverse in a sense because people can complain about all pieces of doing business, we've got to collectively put it together. Now, granted, there's a responsible conversation needs to happen, the majority of the city budget goes directly into city services. We can't just put a massive hole in the city. We strategically have to approach how we do it. Now, as the state's getting better, as the Community College District's getting substantially better, even as LAUSD's getting better with the budget, the city of Los Angeles still projects deficit. That's a problem with managing the budget. That's a problem with understanding what's going on. And look, I'm pragmatic. I've always operated on board that you've got to convince others to come on. There are a number of other approaches to convince eight colleagues, seven colleagues in a sense, to make it eight, to figure out if we can't do it wholesale, we're going to have to do it piece by piece, but my position starts, we have to get to competitive advantages and competitive equal payments. Thank you.
John?
The grocery receipts tax was established in the 70s when we did more manufacturing in Los Angeles. That was a long time ago. We are now service businesses, most of our businesses.
We are now service businesses, most of our businesses. Mayor Villagosa, back in 2010, put together a budget tax advisory committee. There is a report that has been sitting with all the analysis, everything, the outreach that they did, which states waiving this, eliminating it, which the mayor, by the way, the other day said, we're going from five dollars and seven cents in 2006 for every thousand down to four seventy-five. So we're on our way. The problem is, we're always talking about it. And everything goes into a black hole. So, if this report has been done and it is showing us our economy will grow, what will only happen is the businesses who are here will expand. They're not going to move out. I talked to many business owners who do not want to expand in Los Angeles. So keeping our businesses here, letting them expand, bringing businesses in here, again, is the thing to do. We must phase this out. I'd like to see it accelerated a little faster. I know people are afraid, it's all based on fear. What's going to happen with that four hundred forty million dollars? Well, you're going to get it in your sales tax. You're going to get it in your permit fees. You're going to get it in your license fees. Guess what? You're going to get it in your property taxes because people are going to move here because they're going to have their businesses here. We also have filming and bringing more of that back. We give them a tax credit for three hundred thirty million dollars. I say they should have gone to a billion, called it a pilot program, and you know with it. But that's what we need to do. We need to keep things here and we need to eliminate that gross receipts tax.
Thank you. David?
Great question. I fully support responsibly phasing out the gross receipts tax. As for the mayor's proposal, I support it as well. But I do have a few concerns. You know, and I don't want to play backseat driver because I haven't been privy to all the discussions and I haven't seen everything. But, you know, when I say responsibly phasing out the gross receipts tax, what we need to do is convert, there's a lot of loophole, a lot of double taxation issues. I'm sure a lot of you guys could tell me about it. But it's about, we need to immediately convert to a net income tax, which will, which will fix a lot of these loophole issues. Now, and, and you know what? Yes, when we convert to a net income tax, there might be some holes. But that's the right thing to do. Just because the city can't balance its budget shouldn't mean that we should steal from you through double taxation and all these other problems. What we need to do is address the fundamental problems of seeing what's wrong with the budget and trying to fix it. Not trying to tack, not trying to ticket our way out of the problem. So, it's about first converting to a net income tax, then recalibrating it and see how we can start phasing it out. And of course, working with you guys, and I'm sure there's many people in this room who have a lot of different ideas. Thank you.
This is an issue in which the candidates in front of you disagree. Talk about transportation issues. We probably agree, we might emphasize this. No candidate would emphasize that. On the business tax, we disagree. I stood up in front of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce months ago and said to the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce, I am against eliminating the entire business tax for the reasons that folks have alluded to. We will lose four hundred and eighty-seven million dollars, Tara's estimate, of annual revenues for the city of Los Angeles. Our structural deficit is floating in at a hundred and sixty-five million-ish currently. Four hundred million over the next three or so years. We would expand our structural deficit to six hundred and fifty million dollars by repealing the business tax if my colleagues have their way, or some of my colleagues have their way. Folks, I have spoken with a number of you on this issue, and I've been brutally blunt about where the political leadership of the city is on this. I know Merrick Garcetti has promised that he's going to move in that direction. I know he has done one or two small things along those lines. But I am saying to you as one friend to another, the political establishment in the city is not going to eliminate the gross receipts tax or the business tax. What, the reality is that they will make gestures in that direction from time to time. In the first budget, you've got a few million dollars along those lines. But it will not move to complete elimination. I propose that we shift, as David said, I've been arguing this for a long time, to a net receipts tax. I secondly propose that we piggyback on top of a federal or state net receipts tax so that you don't have to pay accountants to calculate a whole city mechanism all over again.
All right. Okay, we'll go from one, one divisive issue to another. And it's the minimum wage. You know, while, while Wally did say that the mayor has espoused eliminating the gross receipts tax as a way of reducing the competitive disadvantage that Valley businesses have with its neighboring cities. On the minimum wage, he certainly doesn't seem to be too concerned about those competitive disadvantages. Can you tell us what your position is on the minimum wage? Should there be one in LA? If so, if you do support minimum wage, what, increase what should be the amount? How would you want it implemented? And is there anything that you would do to mitigate some of the impacts on, on business? And I think Karen's your turn.
Yep, start with me on this one. Have fun. My good friend Michelle has a business that's been open since 1994. Obviously, if it's been open since 1994, it's quite successful. And I actually know her because I'm one of her customers, and the customer's become one of her friends. So I'm one of her friends. Right now, she pays her manager fifteen dollars an hour, and then she pays all of her employees eleven dollars an hour. So she's above the minimum wage for all of her employees. Her cost of all the goods and services that she has to acquire in order to produce the service for us is thirty percent of her, thirty percent of her receipts. And then she actually, God bless you, she takes home eighty-four thousand dollars a year. So this is a small business woman that walks home with eighty-four thousand dollars a year. That's not much money. That's, when you look at it, for how much she works every single day. She works six days a week, twelve hours a day. If she has to raise thirty percent of her, thirty percent or fifty percent, so thirteen, twenty-five or fifteen dollars an hour, and then she assumes, and she's done her math, and I've done math for her too, because this, I have to figure out what I thought on this. Then she looks at price increases. Everything for her businesses, she has to buy locally. It's not something she orders on Amazon and has it shipped. It's something that she buys locally in order to get it to create her business. So all of her prices are probably going to go at eight to ten percent. She cannot raise her prices eight to ten percent. At least, that's what she believes, in order to come up with that accumulation. And if she did raise her prices that much, then of course, her employees are now going to have to spend more. So their dollars aren't going to go as far. At this moment in time, I am not for raising the minimum wage because it doesn't make sense technically. If somebody can show me differently, I would love to be able to tell the fellow Angelenos that I'm going to give them a pay raise. That's one of the greatest things that loss can say. But at this moment in time, the dollars and cents don't add up for competitiveness. Thank you.
The minimum wage conversation's been a very interesting one in Los Angeles for me. And I think most of us in general, I think, would have a very humanistic perspective of life where we believe people who work full-time shouldn't have to live in poverty. It's one of those basic tenets across the board, no matter where you come from. And I come from that same place. I've had a chance to look at the conversations about minimum wage at the state level. And those, just had an increase last year. Had an increase five weeks before that. There's some great conversation. Now, in terms of local municipality, San Francisco's one of those places that happened. Their neighbors are bay and the ocean, and that's a very particular place. In Los Angeles, our neighbors are, again, Burbank and Calabasas and all the people that are around it. The borders between us are very thin. At the LA College District, I got six schools that are in the city of Los Angeles and three schools that aren't. When we initially started this conversation, the proposal's on the table, we diligently went to work to understand the impact of what this would do for us. It impacts negotiation, it impacts the way we lay, roll things out. It has an impact when we lift our lowest-paid workers to that level. It impacts the integrity of a salary schedule, of family relationships inside of labor pools, the person who works and the person who supervises, et cetera. So there's a total cost of doing a business, and that's really challenging. Now, we approached it at the college in a very diligent, research-oriented, data-oriented effort to understand what we're doing, what we can afford. And, and so in our, in our mind, we have our plan how to get our employees up to fifteen dollars a month. And it's implemented based on our work ethic. In Los Angeles, I'm watching the debate. You know, the mayor certainly puts his on the table, passes his economist from Berkeley, and I watch the city council on the floor move to do something different, move to one-up. One-up without information, one-up without, without any kind of real plan to do it. But just one-up because it sounds good. Right now, you see the debate in the paper about, and I think by dissuading the debate, of having the same doctor give a second opinion kind of concepts. You understand that's a problem. But the reality of it is, is when it comes to minimum wage, we have to be data-oriented, we have to understand what we can afford, we have to understand all the impacts that take place. Not just the ones that feel good, not just the ones that sound good, but the total cost of what's going to happen in our, in our workplace.
John?
You know, could I just say? I find it fascinating. People do know their audiences, and I mean my, my colleagues here. Because if you really go back and listen to them at the other debates, it's amazing how that answer changes. But because we are at VICA, and obviously, they know their audience, I'm going to keep my answer the same because that's who I am. One thing you'll get from me is an honest answer, straightforward, to the point. I don't flip, I don't flop. I am for increasing the minimum wage. I would have liked to see us talking about going from nine dollars to ten. And I think I would have liked to see a process where all of you sat at the table and really hashed it out and some business owners who it would have affected. I don't know the process that went on to get to this place. But our people live in poverty. And I'm going to tell you, thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents an hour at the end of the day, at the end of the year, is another eight thousand dollars if you're lucky. And that's before taxes. So these people aren't going on a trip to Europe with the extra money. We have to do something, obviously. My concerns for these people are on the same level with the business. We need to work in conjunction with the business when this happens. How do we help our business through this? However, my concern for the employee is some of these people who have benefits from the city might lose them because now they're in a different tax bracket. And that concerns me. I'm not sure we've really studied that enough. So, talking to the small businesses, there are some, again, it's the concern about the person who is actually making fifteen an hour. What do we do with them? Because they don't think it's fair that somebody else is getting raised. However, again, we need to bring our people out of poverty. This is just wrong. It's easy for us to sit here and say, no, 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 because we go back to our houses. But you have to make ninety-six thousand dollars a year in Los Angeles to afford your own house. Sorry, Sarah, thank you.
David?
Thank you. I support raising the minimum wage. And, you know, I'm not going to argue here about the merits of it and have that discussion now because this is a very divisive issue. However, it shouldn't be that way. You know, for example, the recent hotel minimum wage increase. You know, the process was completely flawed. Regardless of whether we agree or disagree, it's about being able to work together. For example, hotel owners came up to me, restaurant owners came up to me and said, David, do you know that we are only one of four states in the nation that does a blanket increase for our tip employees? And I heard their arguments out, and it makes perfect sense. Because hotel owners came to me and said, I can't promote my valets to be captains because they make more money as a valet. Makes sense. I had a good conversation with Stuart and said, what about nonprofits? There should, nonprofit community, small business community, there should be a discussion. It's not, it's not about being scared to hear it out. And in City Hall for the hotel minimum wage increase, which I prob, I would have supported, but there was no discussion. It's being able to have that dialogue together and figuring out how to make it work. It's about getting all the data. Like the Berkeley study, it doesn't make sense how we have, we should have completely independent, multiple independent panel sources to give us the information. Have organizations like VICA give us your studies and your arguments. Like I said, the more information, the better. But the bottom line is, minimum wage is going to increase. It's going to happen. It's a matter of how we make it happen. It's about making it conducive to help each other and help the, help the, help the business community out. It's about helping the business community and saying, where can we help you to grow your business, expand your business? It should not be like everything else in City Hall where it's us versus them. It should be working together. Thank you.
Wally?
Let me just make two quick points. I think Merrick Garcetti is trying to find a compromise middle ground position on this issue. I think his thirteen twenty-five proposal, along with the Berkeley study, was specifically designed to stake out a middle ground so that he can control and manage the issue. I back him on that. So I favor the mayor's proposal. As you know, it's a three-year phase-in through 2017 in incremental steps, and I'm sure it will be bargained to death. There are all kinds of issues, as David and others pointed out, on the details on how it's implemented. But I think it's important to back the mayor on this one. I'm stepping up to the plate and doing that. Secondly, having the same folks do the study over again is sheer lunacy. How about Steve? What was it he said? That was great.
Second opinion for the same guy.
Second opinion for the same guy.
I was feeling it, Steve.
I think that was the only time.
What a great pepper. Anyway, that was great. I just loved that. Next, why don't we do what happens in politics? Sometimes good things happen in politics. So the best polling that's been done is when a Democratic polling firm partners with a Republican polling firm. They're forced to work together, and they do an analysis and stuff comes out. There's, the stuff that comes out of those polls is far better than the usual trash we get dumped with in politics. Why don't we have the city council hire Tato and Brookings to work together and put a study and an analysis together? That's, that's the direction I would like to see this thing go.
John?
So the, the minimum wage is already going to increase to ten dollars an hour in 2016 statewide. I also support the mayor's initiative of thirteen twenty-five by 2017. But this is something that our whole state is looking at, and the best-case scenario for Los Angeles is a statewide minimum wage increase. We're, you know, Toluca Lake, as everyone has said, a business could move less than a mile away and not lose one iota of its clientele and pay nothing in Burbank. a mile away and not lose one iota of its clientele and pay nothing in Burbank. So, or, or, you know, pay lower wages and pay no gross receipts tax. So, we have to, um, we have to protect the city of Los Angeles. I would lobby for a statewide increase in the minimum wage, and I also, uh, would, would absolutely push for a model that protects small businesses, um, and, uh, you know, nonprofits, and other, you know, smaller budget entities, because they employ most of the people in this city. We have a small business economy. Uh, I ran a small business when I was a freelance writer, it was a small business with one employee, me. But, you, you know, I, I know what that is like, how, and running a, a nonprofit, oh my gosh, you know, just, I think about the fifteen dollars an hour, uh, and what it would've done to my budget at the Trust for Public Land, and I, you know, it would've been a disaster. So, I'm very, very sensitive to folks who look at budgets and, uh, just don't know how it pencils out. So, we have to figure out, you know, we have twenty-five percent of the people in Los Angeles living in poverty, which is an absolute issue. Uh, the Secretary of Labor says that, uh, bringing people out of poverty, poverty is the best thing for small businesses, this is the beginning of a larger conversation. But I'm in favor most statewide increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, two things. One, uh, I think I was under the misimpression that we were ending at nine thirty, it's a good thing that we're not, so we're going until ten, uh, so we've got a little more time. I'm gonna ask, um, one more question, and then I think we'll, uh, then start to open it up to some audience questions. Uh, but let me ask the panel, um, you know, CD four had a change a lot in the last reapportionment, and, and actually, more of a, more of a valley district than it used to be, and more of kind of a central valley district than it used to be. It is a, the valley portion is a little strangely shaped, as I think a lot of you know. But, tell, tell us a little bit about your connection to the valley. The valley has, as, as we all know, has always felt a little short change by City Hall. Tell us about your connection to the valley, whether you live here, and what you would do to make sure that the valley gets its fair share, and I think it's, uh, it's Steve's turn to start.
You know, the valley is, uh, a wonderful place, and I say that because it's where I'm chosen to live. Um, I enjoy it tremendously, I got up here about seventeen years ago. Uh, I was a student at UCLA, and, uh, when I was at UCLA, it was right to the north for church. And, uh, frankly, one of the big decisions I made, because it was, I was cut off from the neighborhoods I grew up in, Hollywood and on the east side, um, we felt a great familiar connection, just happened to have a roommate from San Fran High School in both places. Um, and, um, we made our way to the valley as roommates and lived in Sherman Oaks for the first time, and partially because it was affordable, partially because it wasn't in the Westwood craziness, uh, and we had our rooms, which is a good deal, um, as a student. So I got a chance to live my first time in the valley for, uh, three and a half years. Um, I watched this community struggle to recover from the earthquake. It was very difficult. And, um, all throughout the valley, there was a great energy to rebuild business, to rebuild community. And, uh, it, it had a mark, people left. You can see the apartment complexes, you know, crumbled, the mall was closed, and, and so, um, so I had my affinity, I started working in the valley then, taught at the local colleges, made my way to the north valley. Uh, happened to buy another neighborhood, the first time I got a chance to be a property owner, in a very, uh, working class, uh, neighborhood, uh, and got a chance to buy a really unique little house, a historic house that was made out of river rock. It's my affinity for the Los Angeles river rock. Uh, had a chance to work there, serve the community there, and I happened to marry a woman who, uh, has roots in Sherman Oaks. And so as we settled down to raise our family, we're back down, uh, living in Fashion Square, you know, the first time, first job she or I had was at the mall right before the earthquake. And so, um, so it's been an interesting experience, I raised my kids here, I love being here. The valley has tremendous issues, I, I think as a community, Sherman Oaks, and relatively speaking, the Van Nuys portion of the valley, village portion, very small precincts, are well defined, the four oh five, essentially the orange line involved. The rest of our district has extreme challenges in the redistricting, and one of the goals I would have, uh, in the next VICA cycle of elected, is to confront the fact that this district has been mangled, along with a couple of other districts in the city. We've gotta keep communities of interest together, we've gotta keep fabricists together. This district is the most challenged in the city to deal with that.
John?
As I mentioned earlier, I've lived here for twenty-eight years, and it's changed quite a bit significantly. I think the number one issue as far as how do we get our fair share is when it comes to transportation funds. And that is about the orange line. We know the orange line, Zev pushed and pushed for it, Bob Hertzberg pushed and pushed for it, many others, and we thought we had a ridership of seventeen thousand people. It's up to thirty-three thousand. That tells you people will take public transportation. And by the way, the buses are clean, and they're air conditioned, and so is the red line, and you could eat off the floor when you go there. I think it's the best type of secret people.
I challenge you.
When were you there?
Doing VICA trip.
Has it, oh, okay. Has it changed? So, just a couple of weeks ago. Anyway, I would like to see more funding for our transportation, I think that's really important. I would love to see the orange line turn into rail. Uh, we have to get that money, working with Councilman Krikorian, of course, who sits on the cog, which I think is also another very important committee, there's a lot of things that move from there. VICA, I know Kobe King himself is determined to get our fair share, so you have a great leader at the helm, as well as your other leaders in Sherman Oaks, but that's where we need our fair share. Infrastructure, I have to tell you, uh, because I've managed the resurfacing division for our office for nine and a half years, and, uh, got two hundred miles of streets resurfaced. I know how to create the grids, I know how to get more bang from our buck, and people even in my office would say, why do you put more into the valley side? Which I did not. I just balanced it, it looked like there was more. But I would like to see our infrastructure improvements here as well. I have always wanted an irreversible lane, sorry, reversible lane, straight from Sepulveda all the way down to Wilshire. They do it in major cities everywhere, they're talking about a reversible lane in the tunnels. Well, let's, let's stretch it a little further there. I know you have your, um, neighborhood residents who I think kiboshed this many years ago because they thought people would start driving through their neighborhoods. This is a community that needs to do something on those lines. Thank you.
John, flatter real bad, you're everywhere.
I almost attended North Hollywood. I thought today I was gonna do this.
I would've attended.
You know, I know all about being marginalized and being ignored. I worked in mental health, always a stepchild of health department. I worked, I worked on and I am still currently on my own neighborhood council where I live. Always ignored, doesn't matter what we vote on, never heard. I'm Asian American, entire history of Los Angeles, one Asian American ever elected, now some twenty-five years ago. I'm an LA resident. Who at City Hall listens to us? I know all about being marginalized, I know all about being ignored. I can assure you that, from experience, I will not ignore Sherman Oaks. I will not ignore Sherman Oaks business community, and the communities that surround it. Thank you.
How long can we have on this one? Two minutes.
Okay, thanks. You folks know that I represented Sherman Oaks, managed Studio City, and lived like for years in the state legislature, and it was an absolute joy. Uh, I went into the state legislature immediately facing the nineteen ninety-four earthquake situation. Herschel Rosenthal was the state senator for this area, Herschel led the charge, I was happy to be a lieutenant, learning my way, uh, and worked closely with Herschel on making sure that the insurance companies paid what was owed, so that folks could rebuild after the Northridge earthquake. It was a joy, and I learned a lot of my craft, uh, from Herschel in that example. Um, a second instance I would point to to show how deeply I care about this community was what I did about the four oh five, one oh one interchange issue, which came up during the time I was in the state legislature. This arose not because of, of the general traffic situation of one oh one and four oh five, which has begun to deteriorate since then. Rather, it occurred because there was an interchange, at the interchange, the weaving situation was becoming dangerous. Folks had to move across several lines of traffic in order to enter or exit, we were having accidents, we were, it was a safety issue, and Caltrans was doing nothing. My staff, wonderful people, and that's the key to a council district, gold, it's a great staff, found out that Caltrans had a plan to deal with the issue. Caltrans had the money to deal with the issue, but it wasn't a priority for Caltrans, something else, somewhere else was a priority. I decided we're gonna move on the issue, not through a bill, but by standing tall. And what I did was create a firestorm of activity, I worked with the valley leadership, and we forced Caltrans in short order to correct that wrong. That's the kind of leadership I think you need. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right.
We have, go ahead.
Yes, knowing, I'm so sorry, everybody, my daughter's graduating college today, so there are. Thank you all very much, thank you.
Thanks, John. Carol?
So I think the first thing I would do as a council member is hold a contest to, for the best description of the shape of this district. Some people say it looks like a lobster, there are all these different, were shark tests. Uh, but it, it is, uh, it's, it's, it's a bit of a mess, uh, but I've been working in the valley, not in Sherman Oaks, but in, uh, North Hollywood and Toluca Lake as part of the council district since two thousand six. Uh, my son went to school in the valley, and, um, the thing that I noticed when, in, during the year and a half, that I was the council member's chief of staff in Sherman Oaks, is that there are a lot of solutions that hadn't really come to the valley yet. For example, we had, uh, we not looked at the, the Sherman Oaks, Van Nuys Sherman Oaks, uh, AYSO program, where there were just, you know, seven hundred kids, not one blade of grass, it was, it was like a dust bowl. So, I worked together, worked to put together the funding for a two-point-six million dollar soccer complex, which is under construction now, for that park. I went out and saw it this week, it's moving pace, uh, it's gonna be installed by the end of June. But, I also, uh, worked with an anonymous donor to install new, uh, outdoor fitness equipment in that park. She wanted to do something to honor the council member, I said, what about fitness equipment for Van Nuys Sherman Oaks Park? She said, oh, I used to live in the valley, sure, I, I loved that park, my kids played soccer there. So, she donated the equipment, and people were using it before we'd even cut the ribbon on it. She called me a month later and said, uh, people have to stand in line for this fitness equipment, we want more, uh, and I want it tougher this time, because they're not getting a good enough workout, she was a real fitness buff. So we expanded it, council member LaBange, um, doubled that, uh, matched her commitment. Now we have a huge fitness zone. The point is, there are a lot of solutions that the, uh, are being used in other parts of the city, that are coming to the valley now, to Sherman Oaks, because of the relationships that CD four has developed there, and working with folks, leaders like Joe Banks-Barrad, we can make them happen here. Thank you.
Karen?
I love the valley. I do live in Park Lebrun for the last ten years, I don't live here in the valley, but I grew up in a very small town in middle of nowhere Massachusetts, where you knew your neighbors and all the houses didn't look alike, but you walked to school, you went down the street to get a loaf of bread and, and milk, and you knew that you, you could send your kids over into the playground and not have to worry, which actually, I find the valley reminds me a lot of home. Uh, it's a wonderful place, I actually got my dog at East Valley Shelter, my little Moonchun man, it's, Moonchun is his name, which, that's for me to smile, because he makes me so happy. Um, and actually, at least one Sunday a month, don't tell my parents, that's only one Sunday a month, I go to Saint Mike's and All Angels over on Coldwater, um, for the last few years, because a friend of mine is now past there, there, Dan Justin. The valley, um, is a wonderful place to live, it's a wonderful place to raise a family, it's a wonderful place to actually have a good business. And if we can make the rest of the district a little closer to what we have in the valley, I think we'd be doing a good job, because in a lot of parts in the rest of the district, now that I've driven around it and put a lot of miles on the car, is, is not actually, is in good shape of what's going on out here. I'm here at least every other day, for half the day, and I mean at least, I think it was five days last week. I can tell you without looking at ways when I should use Coldwater, or I should come, uh, the can, Laurel Canyon, or the cheapest way to get here. Now I know that means I'm not one of your homies, but I intend to spend time over here and make sure that you know I share absolutely your values, and want the quality of life for you, uh, that you want for you. So, I'm not one of you, but in part of ours, in why we live here, it makes all the sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a couple of audience questions, and I would just ask that, uh, our candidates try to limit their responses to one minute on these questions. Francine?
Twenty-one years ago last, this week, uh, we had the Northridge earthquake. I worked for Hal Bernson at the time, he was Mr. Earthquake, it was Northridge-Chatsworth where he is, uh, we brought in Lucy Jones, we did studies, we talked about tilt-up concrete unreinforced, we talked about software stories, we went through everything, and we came up with plans. Twenty-one years later, the conversation is starting again. So not much was done. My question is, do you support the current efforts and discussion of the city council to, uh, make it mandatory to retrofit buildings that are not earthquake safe, and how would you go ahead and plan on that?
I wanna make it clear that I don't know this woman, but I really appreciate your question. All right, I think it's David's turn to start us off.
I fully sup, I fully support the mayor's, um, um, initiative. This is the, first and foremost, it's a public safety issue, and yes, we, we had this long discussion at the Apartment Association. Um, obviously, we don't know all the details yet, but we, it needs to be done. Um, we need to make sure we protect, uh, the, both the landlords and the renters. We gotta see if we could leverage other sources, we gotta lobby our federal government, our state, see if we can help fund to pay for all this retrofitting. But it's not just about how we do the pass-through, but it's also about, especially soft stories. I've actually spoken to the property owners, where they said, if we do everything as they requiring us to do, there's, the carports can't fit cars. So it's about working through all these issues, and that's about sitting down with Apartment Association, sitting down with VICA, sitting down with the renters and the landlords to figure out how we could both work together to constructively make sure we could implement it. But it needs to be done, we shouldn't wait another twenty-one years to get it done, but yes, we do whatever we can to push it through.
Thank you. Wally?
Very quick, the mayor's proposal is what he would call a thin proposal. Uh, there's not much more than launching the concept, uh, and outlining a couple ideas on the schedule. I commend him for that, but it's pretty darn thin. Um, I disagree strongly with the soft story timeline, five years is absurd, um, it simply cannot be done, this, I, I don't need to go into that, it's just a terrible idea. The thirty-year timeframe outside of the soft story stuff makes sense, David's absolutely right, we have not a clue how we're gonna pay for this, it is clear it's gonna be shared all around, the city's gonna have to step up and play itself to a certain extent, but as we have had some discussion already, there are some structural deficit issues in the city of Los Angeles, and God only knows how we wrestle with that.
Carol?
Uh, so I was still in the council office, I worked with Patrick Ordolini, who is running the, the San Francisco program. There are great ideas that we can borrow from them. Um, for example, there's a, uh, they created a revolving fund to help the rent stabilized property owners to do the maintenance and, um, retrofit, so that they could get it done, and then paid back, and then other folks could do it. I, I agree that we have to extend the timeline to make the, uh, get the retrofits in place, but public safety has to be number one. We have earthquakes every twenty years, we are due, and, so we really have to take this seriously. Um, they, there, I know that Assembly Member Adrien Nazarian is looking at a tax credit. Uh, we have to offer a menu of options to the property owners on how to pay for this, so that it, that they can actually do it. We really have to protect our rent stabilization, uh, rent stabilized housing, um, uh, the availability of those, uh, buildings, the, the apartments, so that, uh, so we have to offer them help on the retrofits. Thank you.
Karen?
So for the last several years, I've run the western fifteen states for the National Apartment Association, so this is something I can get into at extreme depth, which any of you can ask me about it later, and I know San Francisco's proposal, I could literally talk about all of it, I can tell you which buildings had fell down in, in the Napa when it came down, when they had their most recent earthquake. So all the buildings we're talking about here right now, notice, have stood up ever since North, Northridge. Now if you wanna go and get a second mortgage from Fanny or Freddie right now, any one of those buildings, and by the way, everybody needs a second mortgage from Fanny and Freddie to survive the last seven years, if you're an apartment owner, because they fell, the rents fell, you couldn't afford those buildings either. You actually had to get certified, uh, on your insurance that it would stand up, and this is not a bad liability for our federal government. Now that does not mean these buildings are safe in the Bayland. I was here as a tenant in a masonry building for the Northridge earthquake, scared the bejesus out of me, um, and it was very scary. I live at Park Lebrun right now, which is a rent stabilized building, and it is very scary. We need to talk about demand surge when you're doing everything within five years, we need to focus on fixing the buildings that help the most amount of people quickly, um, and then going about taking care of our tenants from here on out for forever, and making sure these buildings stand.
This issue's a, a very interesting issue, and potentially simple, potentially very complex. Uh, you know, thirty years ago, we had tremendous issues with old buildings and fires. Building codes, far from today, we get sprinkler systems and how we manage it, and frankly, building fires aren't a huge issue, uh, as an issue, uh, as they've been in the past. When it comes to, um, earthquakes, we're an earthquake country, we've been there a long time. I, I do appreciate some of the efforts, resilience, design, and those types of conversations, but the soft bottom, i- it's, it's an important component of the housing that's offered in Los Angeles. It's essentially one of those areas of portability, uh, that's, uh, well put together, but at the same time, this is, the approach is, we're the devil that visits the details. We have, eventually, the insurance industry- We have, eventually, the insurance industry is probably going to have some role and some say, I'm looking at State Farm here, they're going to have some impact in this conversation. But in the city, in terms of a mandate conversation, I would be very much in support of making sure we freeze, don't have reassessments as this mandate comes forward and we have to do these upgrades. I would be in favor of having the City Institute revolving fund with low interest or no interest loans to be able to move it along and be a partner in this effort. It's a partner for everybody. In a natural disaster, everyone's reacting. But at the same time, a flat-out mandate, there isn't the money. This could have a really dramatic impact on portability. And I think we have to be a lot more thoughtful and sensitive with the way we see the whole package.
All right, I think we have time for one more question. I saw the hand of former VICA chair and current Calabasas City Councilman, Brad Page. Why don't you quickly ask a question?
Thank you. I read reports regarding the Sherman Oaks Summoner Association debate and that they had sent a questionnaire and that people had answered the questionnaire and that one of the questions was, would you ever support a variance or exception from the Ventura specific plan? And I think I saw that all the candidates that were here said, nope, I will never do that.
I did not.
You did not? Good.
I left a blank too.
All right. Well, the box I saw said, yes, 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 yes.
Blank is a good answer.
So the ones who did then, who did say that, I want to know, is that true? That, and it disappoints me for two reasons. One, it's a quasi-judicial decision. You're sitting in a judicial role. We're supposed to look at the facts and decide whether it applies. And two, as someone who was involved in writing the Ventura specific plan in 1988, not all the rules are all that great. For example, for a Starbucks, to build the building 10 feet back off the street so that they can have outdoor seating requires an exception or variance. So I want to know, are you never going to vote for an exception or variance? Or are you going to look at each case on an individual basis and determine whether a variance or exception is applicable in that case?
Good question. We're running short of time, so please keep your answers 45 to 60 seconds. And we'll start with Wally.
I propose that we move away from the current system in which the community plans and zoning really pay almost no regard to, don't govern the situation at all. They're so dated, we have to have, continue. You have to get a variance or a zoning change to do just about anything. I said yes on that because it's consistent with my position that I want to develop community plans that become binding law on council members as well. It is my view that the problem in Los Angeles is that we have 15 barons ruling their fiefdom. Developers go hat in hand to the council member, begging to give them political protection for their development and hoping that the council member hangs in with them for the time that the entire project takes place. But I made that pledge to them with regard to their plan and I'll stick to it.
Carolyn?
Okay, the reason I didn't check that is because I, every project has to be thoroughly vetted. And you have to determine in place what it's going to look like. And we've had the experience of negotiating much better and frankly, less dense projects with developers than what would have been allowable under the Ventura specific plan. So it just didn't make any sense to say, no, everything has to comply with the plan. And your example of Starbucks is a great one. So I agree. We have to look at what's on the ground now, what developers want to develop, what the needs of the community are in 2014, 20, oh, sorry, 2015. And find the development that is appropriate for the needs of Sherman Oaks today and the needs of the community, the business community and traffic. But there's so many things that have to be taken into account that have changed in the last 30 years.
I'm actually with you. I did not say yes to that. I'm a no. And that actually, I understand she's talking about building for today. I actually look that we're building for 10, 15, 20 years down the road. And a community is going to evolve and grow. And I'm not saying that there shouldn't be some certainty because somebody that, anybody that has big plans, great, great old plans to start a business or to grow a business needs to have some certainty to know they can do that right here instead of moving to someplace else. I know Calabasas is wonderful, but I don't want them to come to you. I want them to stay here. So, but we need to plan for 10 to 15 years down the road.
You know, case-by-case planning is a really hard thing to do. And it's absolutely the rule in Los Angeles. Variances, that's just the way we do stuff here. 60% of the city is under a special district, special conditions. We have no consistency in the planning effort. And in my mind, I'd love to see us be able to update community plans, general plans, allow for certainty and have development by right. Not by case-by-case, but as agreed upon set rules where you understand the timetable that it will take if you're going to decide to do and enter into this project. Too frequently, right down the street, we have litigation against this. And it's, our planning process, case-by-case basis, tends to equal litigation at the end. We have an outdated Hollywood community plan that's put a target on the western sunset in the middle of flux and uncertainty. That's a very difficult perspective. Now, say this, the general plan that we exist on the majority of it dates back to 1980. We have a policy statement that talked about tying development with infrastructure from the 1990s. But we haven't had an infrastructure report since 2003 be official. So we have a terrible train wreck when it comes to planning. The specificity of where I'm standing in terms of variance also comes with getting all this land use documentation framework up to speed, up to date, where you can take the developer you're working with and understand exactly what the rules are and how fast this process is going to take you to get you to that end goal, as opposed to having to fight through legal battles and appeals and variances and frankly, litigation at the end of this thing.
Thank you. I was one of the few candidates who left that blank as well. And that's because, let me first say, I am doing everything it takes to uphold existing laws and rules. That's why we have them in place. But at the same time, it's exactly what you said, especially with the Ventura specific plan written in 1988. There is no such thing as absolutes. There's always going to be an exception. And the questionnaire, and I took a hit for it at SOHA for not answering, for not, I knew exactly what they wanted me to say, exactly what I had to write, but we took that questionnaire seriously. And I tell you, and I ask you to look back to that questionnaire and see how I answered every single one of them. And we try to be as consistent as possible. And because, and like I said, I took a hit that day. But I tried to explain to them, there might be a variance or an exception where the community actually wants. So it's hard to be, have a steadfast and say, just like the minimum wage, no or yes. Because this is how you govern. You work with others. You develop the processes to go forward.
You'll notice at VICA, we don't ask yes or no questions.
Thank you.
We let people explain themselves.
First of all, I want everyone to notice that I didn't ask a transit question. I think everyone knows that that's my top priority. But everybody seemed to address that in their various answers. So we appreciate the support for value attract projects that will be advocated for in the new sales tax measure and beyond. So it's come to time now for closing statements. We've got two minutes for each of you. And then after that, we'll close up. But I believe, Carolyn, it's your turn to start.
So I grew up in a big family. My father was a coach in the NBA, Jack Ramsey. I lost him recently, which has been very difficult. But I grew up moving around to different cities. And, you know, really learned a lot about how cities operate. I became a reporter and wrote about cities, wrote about crime and education, courthouses, city government, in, again, moving around. So by the time my husband and son and I moved to Los Angeles 25 years ago, this was the eighth state I had lived in. When I moved here, we moved into the fourth district. And I remember saying to my husband, there's no place better than this. This is, we really have to do everything we can to stay here. So, you know, I got involved because I was a reporter. You know, I wanted to make my neighborhood safer for our kids. We had bought a sort of tumbling down craftsman in the Willshire area after the riots. And I just loved it. And had genuine success on the ground. Raised money for this median on Larchmont Boulevard. We had our neighborhood declared a historic district. And even though I never in my life thought I would be president of my neighborhood association, I loved it. Councilmember LaBange offered me a job. And I've loved what I've been doing ever since. And it's the same model over and over again. Getting private money, matching it with public money to make on-the-ground improvements. The work that I've done with the SANK and the Chamber and SOHA in Sherman Oaks has been fantastic. It's all about teamwork, which I grew up with as the daughter of a coach in a big family where everything we did was about working as a team. And it's about delivering. It's about getting things done and making sure they're done properly. So, you know, the business community is a major part of the team that exists in the valley. The business community, working together with the neighborhoods and the neighborhood council is really, that's the sweet spot right there. And the council office exists to work with you to make on-the-ground improvements in the community. So thank you.
When I came to California 25 years ago, this place became my home. I absolutely fell in love. And I am thrilled to bits at the kind of things that I have been able to do to serve my community, to serve all of you. And I want to thank all of you for coming here this morning. Because I know that as business people, you choose where to spend your time. And you choose not, if you're a business person and you're a part of an association, you realize that working together, we can make a big difference together. It's not just about one business being successful. It's about all businesses being successful. And coming here today, you recognize that government can either be in your way or it can help you. And I realize that my job as a city councilwoman is to help you create your business, keep your business moving, hire good employees, retain good employees, make your neighborhoods safe and your streets walkable so your customers can get there and so that you can go out and walk your dog every single day in the morning and the evening. And that we together can create a bigger, bolder, brighter future, not just for LA and for our city government, but for the generations that come after us. The decisions we make now affect 20 years from now. So what do we want to do? What do we want our legacy to be? And I have a funny feeling, many of you in the room have already figured that out for yourselves. And I'm asking for your vote. I'm asking for your support. And I hope I have at least given you some ideas of who I would be and how I would help you. I want your thoughts. I want to share your thoughts. I want to hear what you have to say because you know about your neighborhood. You know about your business. You know about the community groups that you're involved in. And you know what you can do to make Los Angeles better. Let's start collaborating. Let's work together and come up with fresh innovative ideas. If we do the same thing we've done for the last 20 years, we're going to have the same problems. Let's think fresh. Let's think different. Let's use the new technologies. Let's all work together and create the California dream for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, one of my fellow candidates here talked about the improvements of the park across the street, the soccer fields. I'll tell you what's interesting about that is having, being a park user, having my kids at the park. That improvement came after frankly, the fields went to dirt throck. It became a dust bowl. That's a deferred maintenance conversation. You know, a few months ago, I was afraid I was going to have to go back to the sports arena to watch each other basketball games because there was a water main break on Sunset Boulevard on a 300-year deferred cycle of maintenance. Those are real problems. Now, in this campaign, I'm telling people about my time at the LA College District. When I got there, it was a really challenging district. Nobody knows lots about that. We've done stuff together to try to put this in a better direction. I've made very specific decisions. Taken on interest groups, taken on the way we did business to see it in a different kind of way. We did our own deferred maintenance, first time I've done it. Put 1.5% of that budget into a special fund to deal with deferred maintenance. That's an issue. That's a budget decision. Now, reforming the city is a very difficult energy. I think it needs reform. There's just some plain, simple things that are happening that shouldn't be happening. We should be proud to, and I'm glad for I raised a question about land use. Land use is definitely an area that needs reform. The way we manage budget is an area that needs reforms. Now, I'll say budget of the colleges, I don't have any conflict with them. I got, dealt with friends, dealt with colleagues, dealt with interest groups, dealt with people who were very difficult to deal with. And we got to common goals. We forced ourselves to get to the table and find common ground for the better interest of the entire institution. One group does not exist on an island inside of institutions. You have to work together. You have to find common ground. Los Angeles is in need of funding reform. And sometimes, actually, perhaps even radical change. I have the background. I have the experience. I have the willingness. I've talked about it consistently in the campaigns role. Been criticized by others for standing on certain points. But you have to dig deep. You have to dig aggressively. We have to change the way the city's going or else we're all going to be unhappy.
Thank you so much. You know, everyone talks about endorsements. I urge you to look out for my future endorsements, which we're going to roll out very soon. They're all from very fiscally responsible and business-friendly elected officials. But let's have a frank discussion. I read the LA Times. I know how to Google. I can easily give you the one-minute, two-minute response that you want to hear. But talk is cheap. Don't vote for, don't support the person who's going to be the best researcher, but the one who's actually going to get the job done. It's not about headlines, about concepts, but it's about all the small, non-sexy things. For example, like Magic Show. Does anyone know what the Magic Show is? The big, two-week industrial conference that they have in Las Vegas? A fashion show. The premier fashion show in the world. Magic, you know what magic stands for? It's in Las Vegas right now. Men's Apparel Guild in California. It outgrew California, so it's in Las Vegas. You know what's frustrating? Instead of talking about the convention center and trying to grow it, I actually have people in the garment industry who said, the entire industry in LA, half of the people at the Magic Show are from Los Angeles. And they said, why can't we have our own little magic show here at the convention center? I've been trying to work with the city. I finally got a friend who's now sitting on the convention center commission. So hopefully, we can make it, move it through. Why can't we incentivize them to do a show here when they want to do it here? Additional hotels, restaurants, I mean, all the money and capital that could be spent here, but they're having a hard time trying to do a show here. Someone, one of the other candidates talked about, why does it take so long to put in a power line to expand business? You know why? Because the departments are working in silos. I had a small business owner who had to wait two months to install some power meters, install a power meter to open up their business. You know why they couldn't get it done? Because the person sitting next to them, who had to go install it, was going to the wrong address. 333 and a half, not 333. It took the city council's office, it took, who solved it in 30 seconds, to realize I was wrong. Why can't we get the people to just talk to each other? Why can't we get this system, it's all these little things, to fix together, to streamline it through, so you could grow your business, so you could expand your business and we grow LA? Thank you.
I was hoping I have an opportunity to talk about some transit issues with greater depth, and I'm going to take my closing remarks to do just that. I mentioned the idea that what I think we need to do is move professionals, lure professionals into public transit. I absolutely think that is the central problem facing us currently in Los Angeles transportation issues. We have half a million folks moving from the San Fernando Valley across the hill every day to go to work and back. Massive traffic jam in Sherman Oaks. Carolyn is right. Ron Ziff was able to get a single bus line put in. But my friends, a single bus line of a conventional bus sort is not going to attract professionals who are not anxious who are not anxious to get onto an ordinary bus, spend an hour on an ordinary bus, arrive at work uncomfortable from the ride, and think that they have done something good. We need to create, through the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, which already does the commuter express. We need to model ourselves on the commuter express, but raise it to a whole other level, to a level of buses in which a professional boards the bus, gets a great cup of coffee, gets a pre-made breakfast that is fantastic, sits down at a seat that really is a kind of modified workstation, plugs into wifi, and 45 minutes later, the lucrative having billed 45 minutes of work already. The boss loves you. Boss might even pay for it. Because it's buses and not rail lines, the flexibility is infinite. We can experiment with pickup points and drop-off points. You can do a drop-off point at Benet Phelps and contract with Benet Phelps to foot the bill for the whole gizmo. And 30 years down the line, we'll build a subway through this pulpit of a pass, maybe. But today, I think we move on these bus ideas. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, we still wanna see Ralphie's fall to the bathroom. All right, well, that's all the time we have for today. I wanna thank all the panelists and the candidates for coming today and answering their questions. I think thank you again for sponsors, that was State Farm and McCarty.
And in any case, thanks, everybody.